Good afternoon, all. This is State Senator Marilyn Moore. This is a public hearing. We'll be listening to testimonies today on an act establishing a commission to study a Husky for All Single-Payer Universal Healthcare Program.
Just also remember that we had a bill similar to this probably about eight years ago. So just so everybody's aware.
So we'll get started. So the first person on the list is Jill Zorn. Jill, you there?
Yes, I am.
Thank you, Jill.
Okay. Senator Moore and Representative Abercrombie and members of the committee. My name is Jill Zorn and I'm Senior Policy Officer at Universal Healthcare Foundation of Connecticut. And I'm here today to testify on behalf of the foundation to convey our strong support for Senate Bill 1090. It's an important step toward achieving guaranteed quality, affordable, equitable healthcare for all in Connecticut. As you know, our current system of healthcare coverage, care and finance is extremely fragmented and it's broken. Huge variation exists in benefit designs, provider networks, prescription drug formularies, and the prices paid for care. This leads to a system, well, really a non-system. Where the United States has the most expensive healthcare in the world, it has massive racial, ethnic, racial and ethnic health disparities, and has higher uninsured rates and worse health outcomes than most developed countries. And affordability challenges of our system are so extreme that we have a very high rate of underinsurance, too. Even those with coverage are often afraid to use it. We fully support adding Connecticut to the growing list of states, including New York, Oregon, Washington, and Colorado, that are studying the implementation of a single payer system. It's about time that Connecticut joined these ranks. And we're glad to see the provider rates are included in this study. The goal should be one price list to improve administrative simplicity and enhance affordability. But given the extreme variation in what providers are paid now, this will be a challenging implementation issue, so it's important to study. And the study should definitely include a health equity impact assessment. The bill should also explicitly state that coverage for undocumented immigrants would be included. And it should look at the impact of all kinds of jobs, not just those in health or insurance sectors, on the overall cost of healthcare and on the economy as a whole. We'd like to say that the current list of proposed commission members really needs to be augmented with consumer representatives, and we've given some examples. And also someone from the Commission on Women, Children, Seniors Equity and Opportunity should be included, someone from that commission should be included on this commission. Our foundation has extensive experience participating on commissions and overseeing studies of health policy reform. In our experience, funding both for the research itself and for staff support will be necessary if this effort is to be successful. And while this study is happening, we still need to make progress uncovering more people. So I hope the committee will JF SB 956 and 1056 to expand Husky to more people regardless of immigration status. We urge you to pass SB 1090. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Jill. Questions? Representative Hughes.
I just wanted to clarify that in the latest language, there is consumer representatives added.
Okay, great.
So I just wanted to note that for the record.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, Jill. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next is Allison Weir.
Good afternoon, Senator Moore, Representative Abercrombie, Representative Case, and members of the committee. My name is Allison Weir. I'm a policy advocate with Greater Hartford Legal Aid. I'm here in support of SB 1090 on behalf of Greater Hartford Legal Aid, Connecticut Legal Services, and New Haven Legal Assistance Association. We are fully in support of the bill, but we recommend that legislature amend the bill to include representatives from nonprofit organizations which provide direct legal representation to low-income Medicaid enrollees and to study the, and to include the, study of the impact of any program on existing Medicaid enrollees. The Husky Medical Program in Connecticut is a successful and efficient mechanism for providing a wide range of healthcare. And as it has a cost track, it's a track record of containing costs that is second to none among health insurance programs in the state. As such, it can be a good foundation to build, on which to build a single payer program for all residents, which is certainly a worthy, idea worthy of study. Legal Services fully supports the commission to study a Husky for All program. We caution, however, that any study should include consumer advocates, including representatives from those nonprofit legal organizations that work daily to preserve the legal rights of low-income residents to healthcare. Healthcare assistance is a notoriously complicated collection of intersecting federal and state laws. And having individuals steeped in these laws from the perspective of the consumer can only help improve the understanding of the, and work of the commission as it considers expanding the program to all. While the commission includes representatives from the Health Equity Solution and United States of Care, which are great consumer advocates, they are not legal organizations engaged in the legal pitfalls of getting people enrolled in Husky, ensuring the legal rights of enrollees are preserved, and knowledgeable about the federal, how the federal laws and state laws interact to create the programs we call Husky. As such, we strongly recommend, recommend representation from nonprofit legal organizations engaged in direct legal representation of low-income Medicaid enrollees. We also caution that any program implemented should not result in less quality and cost efficiency for current Husky residents. Thus, we would add as an additional area study in subsection E, quote, "10, The Impact of Husky for All Single-Payer Universal Healthcare Program on Existing Medicaid Enrollees, Including But Not Exclusively Access to Care Provider Networks and Other Quality Measures." Thank you for testifying. Let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you very much. Have a great afternoon.
I don't see any questions for you, Allison, but thank you. And I'll be handing this over to my vice chair, Matt Lesser.
The next person present is Gavin Kern.
I'm actually driving now, so I'm sorry there's no video. I want to testify today in favor of SB 1090. I believe healthcare is a human right. And with that, Connecticut should expand healthcare to all citizens or all, all people regardless of income. And I'll keep testimony short. Basically, I, I want to see it enacted in, in the state, but I'm definitely in favor of studying the policy first. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Gavin. Are there comments or questions from members of the committee? Comments or questions? If not, thank you very much for your testimony. Please drive safe.
I thank you very much.
All right. Next up, we have Taylor Biniars.
Hello, can you hear me?
You sure can.
Yes. Dear Senator Moore, Representative Abercrombie, and members of the Human Services Committee. My name is Taylor Biniars. I am from Allington, Connecticut. And I support Senate Bill 1090, an act establishing a commission to study a Husky for All Single-Payer Universal Healthcare Program. A single payer universal healthcare system would make healthcare equitable, dependable, and affordable. Our country is horrendous when it comes to healthcare. I am turning 25 this June, and I am paralyzed by insomnia most nights thinking about what happens next year when I turn 26. I work in this field, actually, politics, but with no degree, it's mostly seasonal, which I'm okay with, but it's not like those jobs come with benefits. I want to briefly mention a few things that have impacted me. I've sprained my ankle three times in one night. The doctor said it actually would have been better if I had broken it. But I waited until the morning to go to an urgent care as my co-pay for that is far cheaper than going to an ER, even though I was in a lot of pain. Over a month ago now, my dad, who, if you know me for more than 10 minutes, you know he is my best friend, he had a heart attack. Thankfully, due to quick medical care, he's doing fine. But the second thought after making sure he was okay was about money and the cost. And while it shouldn't matter, he has a very decent job. Thirdly, I breathe through my mouth. I haven't been able to breathe through my nose since I was six years old. That doesn't seem important, but it makes me more vulnerable to cavities, which I cannot afford. And I don't expect my parents to always pay for my co-pays, so I stopped going to my dentist three years ago. When I can actually afford to go again, they will probably be root canals. Lastly, I have been depressed since I was 11, and therapy since 15, on medication since 17. I've dealt with anxiety, cutting, other forms of self-harm, and my therapist has basically saved my life. My therapy has gone back to once a week, which is a $25 per co-pay. That's $100 a month and $1,200 a year. It may not sound like a lot to some of you, but to me, it is everything. And the root of my fear for next year is if I can survive without it, if I have to. Basically, every other civilized country does this. And there's no excuse beyond capitalism and greed for why we do not. I know that there are lots of facts that others may testify with, but this is my life, and one life is worth more than all the profit. I am ashamed that our country hasn't realized this yet. I hope you pass this study bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Taylor, and thank you for having the strength to tell your story. I know is a story that we've heard from you, but I think we're going to hear similar stories from, from other people here today about why healthcare is so important. Just speaking personally, you know, I've gone through medical issues in my past, and I've been very lucky because healthcare is hard enough without having to worry about how to pay for it. And there's a lot we've got to figure out. So thank you for telling your story. Are there comments or questions from members of the committee? Yes, Representative Hughes.
Thank you. Thank you, Taylor, so much for your testimony. I, I wanted to know if you had some ideas in terms of this study that, of course, we're looking at a Husky for All that covers vision, dental, hearing, behavioral health, physical health, and long-term care. Do you think that from your experience in outreach and activism, that we have the political and public will to seriously look at this now?
I definitely think that we do, and thank you for your question. I definitely think that we do. I think even before this pandemic, that if you look, the, you know, Medicare for All or single payer healthcare system, the popularity has been rising for that. Every single year, it gets more and more popular. And it was especially talked about in the 2016 presidential election. And then it seemed like every candidate was talking about it in the 2020 presidential primary, when only one was talking about it in 2016. So we're seeing it become more popular, more candidates are being on board with it. And I think especially now that there's been a pandemic and, you know, nationally, internationally, this is the time to do this. This is the time where it makes the most sense to really try to get this done.
Thank you. That, that's all I had.
Other comments or questions from members of the committee? If not, thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
I believe we have Holly Hackett. And Holly, you're up.
Okay. Thank you, Senator Lesser. Senator Lesser, Senator Moore, Representative Abercrombie, and distinguished members of the Human Services Committee. My name is Holly Hackett, and I live in East Haven. I am a community advocate for Mothers and Others for Justice and Health, which is helping everyone achieve lifelong trusted healthcare, Medicare for All Connecticut. And I am a community liaison with the Enrich Lab at the Yale School of Public Health. I stand in support of SB 1090, an act establishing a commission to study a Husky for All Single-Payer Universal Healthcare Program. It is imperative that the committee on Human Services vote this Senate bill out of committee joint favorable so the bill can progress to the next stages of the legislative process. I will tell you my stories. It's more important to me, you have all the data, you have my written testimony. My mom had a brain tumor. It was the size of a softball. It was removed a few years back. She still currently has an aneurysm, and she was supposed to get MRIs done every three months. Her United Healthcare Advantage Plan denied approval for that. Her doctor changed the orders then for every six months. Still denied. Finally, her one-year MRIs were approved. And in my opinion, this is not just absolutely immoral, it is criminal. I did call the Office of the Healthcare Advocate to try to help out the situation, but my mom would not let me go any further. But yet, when she told her surgeon's office that I reached out to OHA on her behalf, she never got denied again. I just thought it was a little odd. In my case, when I was determined eligible for social security disability, I had to wait 24 months for Medicare coverage. And in that timeframe, I did not have any insurance because my income was too high due to the lump sum payment from social security. It is a ludicrous way of calculating salary and completely unfair to leave an extremely vulnerable person with major health issues and no health coverage for two years. That's unacceptable and should never, ever happen and needs to change. I lived in elderly disabled housing, and I helped a lot of my neighbors who were being completely preyed upon by insurance people to purchase Medigap insurance when they never needed it because they all qualify for Medicare savings programs. So it was just horrendous, and it happens all the time with the elderly and the disabled, and that needs to stop. If a single payer universal healthcare program is put in place in Connecticut, we would not have to worry about predatory for-profit insurance companies going after our most vulnerable populations, such as the elderly and disabled. We would never, would also never again have to worry about maintaining our employment to keep our medical insurance. We in Connecticut have some top-notch healthcare facilities and medical school programs, yet we have some of the worst outcomes than any other industrialized nation. Our current system is broken, and if the federal government cannot fix it, we here in Connecticut must. Instead of being the insurance capital of the world, we should be the healthcare capital of the world. We have the nurses, doctors, trained support staff, mental health experts, hospitals, and universities. We just have to dismantle the broken, out-of-date, usually racist, negative, misogynistic, for-profit healthcare system and have a new way of doing things where everyone is truly treated equally.
Excuse me, your three minutes, excuse me, your three minutes are up. Please summarize.
I'm ready. I am right now. I appreciate your time and consideration. I hope you vote joint favorable on SB 1090 so that Connecticut can become a shining star of the healthcare world and the health, and our population will be the healthiest, most productive with a bustling economy. Thank you so much.
Thank, thank you, Holly.
Thank you so much. Have a great day.
You, too. But next up, we have, I believe, Claudette Kidd.
Good afternoon, Senator Moore, Representative Abercrombie, and members of the Human Service Committee. My name is Claudette Kidd, and I reside in New Haven, Connecticut. I stand in support of SB 1090, an act establishing a commission to study a Husky for All Single-Payer Universal Healthcare Program. In that system, it takes responsibility for financing healthcare for all, sorry, for financing healthcare for all residents. That is, everyone has health insurance under one health insurance plan and has, and, and has access to necessary services, including doctors, hospitals, long-term care, prescription drugs, dentists, and vision care. Individuals may choose where they go to receive their care. This bill will create a commission to study the potential for a single payer system in Connecticut. Therefore, it is very important, this is very important further steps towards charting a path to a statewide single payer health plan in Connecticut. In this current system, I feel imprisoned and not in control of what physician I can see, who can help me with my ailments and recommend treatment that actually works, instead of me chasing my tail, trying to get well, and, and lower my problems with pain management. Therefore, this causes more stress, high blood pressure, possible PTSD, or not attending my appointments at all, leaving no trust in the current system. The cost of medical care would go down significantly if, would go down significantly if it was financed by taxation and not by premiums. Roughly one-third of healthcare dollars spent in the US goes towards administrative costs rather than on actual healthcare. Single payer makes fiscal sense. If we are to implement the taxation process for people and employers to pay into, just as they do currently for, for-profit commercial insurance plans, as my fellow friend said, Holly Hackett, it would save the state, Connecticut, the state of Connecticut approximately 2.9 net savings. And that is a savings of $1.475 billion. And this is according to Professor Rodberg. It would establish a true free market system, turning the tables around to where doctors now compete for patients rather than health insurance companies dictating the patients, which patients are able to see which doctors, and sets, and setting reimbursement rates. It would also prevent insurance from maxing out your insurance, and your ail, and your ailments have not improved at all. For example, having few or no teeth left because rather than help save a tooth or teeth, the dentist would rather pull them out, or offer services that cost way over $1,000 or more, which most of us cannot afford. Meanwhile, we're struggling with housing stability, instability, food insecurity, and can barely pay rent and utilities. They need to take a walk in our shoes. Throughout New Haven, I see many people with missing teeth, tooth, and I say to myself, there goes a possible person who the system has failed.
Excuse me, excuse me, ma'am. Your three minutes are up. Can you please summarize? Thank you.
Yes, I sure will. Guaranteed equitable coverage for all is what we need, including, including dental, vision, et cetera. Healthcare is a human right. We need Medicare for All, including, included for undocumented immigrants. We need SB 1090. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kidd. Thank you for your testimony this afternoon, and I appreciate you being here. Kessler, followed by Matthew Meislich.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Awesome. Good afternoon, esteemed members of the committee. My name is Cameron Kessler. I live in Hartford. I am a Masters of Social Work student here in Hartford at UConn School of Social Work. I'm a social work intern at Connecticut Citizen Action Group, and I'm also a children's librarian. I speak on behalf of myself and CCAG today in full support of SB 1090. First, I want to tell you about my own insurance experience. Some of you may have actually heard this story when I testified on behalf of SB 842, but I'll tell you anyway. I received my health insurance through my parents. While I'm lucky to be on their insurance, obviously, it doesn't provide me with adequate healthcare. My family's deductible is $5,000 per person, so that's $15,000 a year for all three of us to be covered. I don't have ongoing health problems, which means I don't normally meet this deductible. So when big things happen, it happens all at once. So in June of 2020, I had a routine but emergency surgery. I had to get my appendix removed. Even though I have insurance, I had to pay $5,000 out of pocket all at once for this surgery. I only work part-time because I'm also a full-time graduate student, and I just finished paying these expenses off almost a full year later. And due to this low-quality health insurance, I tend to avoid seeking out healthcare unless it's an emergency, like my appendix last June. And many others in the state are in the same situation as me. And during a global health crisis like this, it can't be the case. This is going to keep happening for a long time. And when people don't seek out healthcare when they need it, the consequences are life and death. Husky for All would literally save lives. Secondly, I also want to point out that in 1992, the Public Health Committee chaired at the time by Congressman Joe Courtney, commissioned Lewin, an independent corporate consulting firm, to develop a plan for Connecticut anticipating that Bill Clinton would pass healthcare reform. The health, that healthcare reform was nicknamed Hillary Click, Hillary Care, excuse me. Obviously, it didn't pass, but the study concluded that if Connecticut were to adopt single payer healthcare, the state would save $7.7 billion over the course of 10 years. And that was in 1990. So we're experiencing a public health crisis unlike anything we've seen in the past century and maybe longer. Now, more than ever, we need to ensure adequate healthcare for all of Connecticut, not just those who can afford it. And not only that, switching to a single payer healthcare system has already been shown to make economic sense in this state. This avenue needs to be explored again, and we need to start now. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Cameron. And you're right, some of us do double duty on a couple of different committees, but it's good to see you again, and thank you for sharing your story. Are there comments or questions from members of the committee? Yes, Representative Hughes.
Thank you so much, Cameron, for your testimony. And I have heard these catastrophic stories before. Just to sort of piggyback on our last, our last testifier, you know, one of the things that Connecticut tries to do is expand what's covered under Husky. So I don't know if you've been on Husky or know of anybody, but like, children's dental, we do pretty well with preventative care. We don't do well with covering, even if you do qualify for Husky, like some of the things that we're talking about with, you know, the, the, the root canals and the cavities and the, and the more, you know, serious things that can turn into infections and be catastrophic. And that's why it's so important that even in 1990, if we looked at what it would cost to switch to a single payer, which is really eliminating so much of the administrative costs, that middle for-profit thing that we talked about, but also just covering the services, just that, you know, a rate of reimbursing basic services. How long do you think it would take for our population, especially young people like yourself, to just start catching up on using preventative care and routine care and preventative care? How long do you think that would take if you were suddenly covered by a, you know, like a robust Husky for All? Which is why I keep saying it's got to cover dental, vision, hearing, behavioral, and, and medical, uh, physical health as well as long-term care?
I mean, I think this would be a cultural shift. My whole generation, we're just under this idea that we can't afford healthcare. I don't know anyone that goes to the dentist twice a year. It's like almost laughable to think that you would go two times a year just, just for preventative care.
Wow.
I don't know anyone with a GP. It would, I mean, it would change our society forever if we had this kind of system.
So you're basically of a generation that just avoids contact with the medical healthcare provider?
Absolutely. I mean, I even think, you know, you hear these things. It's like, if it's an emergency, don't call an ambulance. If it's an emergency, like, call someone who can drive you to the ER because we can't afford ambulances. So I, this, I mean, this would change everything.
Wow. Thank you. That's very powerful. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your story, and I'm glad you're doing better. It's the terrifying story. So thank you for being here. Next up, we have Matthew Meislich, followed by Daniel Bryan, followed by Karen Siegel.
Thank you, Senator Lesser. Thank you to the committee. I'm, my name is Matt Meislich. I'm in my final year of the MD/PhD program at Yale School of Medicine. And I want to start by telling a very brief story. One of my patients, who I've saw regularly in the Yale Primary Care Center, had severe heartburn, which of course is, is quite common, and developed difficulty swallowing. That, for us, raises alarms because it can indicate the development of esophageal cancer. And esophageal cancer has a mortality rate of about 80% in five years. The way you prevent that outcome is to detect the cancer early. And the way we do that is with endoscopy. So we directly visualize the esophagus to see if there's cancer. The, the problem was that this patient didn't have health insurance. He was an electrician. He made a decent income. He wasn't eligible for Husky because of his income, and he wasn't able to afford private health insurance. So he opted not to get the endoscopy. It was too expensive. We don't know if he had cancer. The right thing to do would have been to test for it. And if he did have cancer, we almost surely missed our window of opportunity to actually intervene and, and, and save his life. That story, unfortunately, is commonplace. I mean, every physician that you speak to, every healthcare provider will tell you stories just like that because there are so many people who fall through the cracks in our current healthcare system and for whom we can't provide the right kind of care. And those are just the patients who actually come to our attention. So I've been in the MD/PhD program for nine years, which is enough time to have a good sense of a lot of the problems that exist because of the structure of our healthcare system. But I'm beginning residency next year. So I'm early enough in my career that I feel optimistic. And I feel that we can carve out the kind of healthcare system that actually serves our communities and in which we have, me, myself and my colleagues have, have signed up to, to participate in. You know, we went into healthcare because we believe in serving our communities, not in serving people who can afford health insurance, and not in dictating our care based on the incentives that are driven by our current health insurance system. So in that vein, I've, over the last many years, or starting in 2009, I've been advocating for legislation in Connecticut that would, that would increase access for a number of people who are currently excluded, beginning in 2009 with Sustenet, which of course would have provided a public option. And most recently, the session for SB 956. And most recently, the session um for SB nine five six um that would extend uh Husky to um immigrant communities, um which of course is in this Human Services Committee. Um, but I want to make the point today that those are, basically, we're we're plugging holes, right? Those are holes in the ship, and we are plugging them as fast as we can. And it's it's critical to do that work. It's critical to plug those holes and to get health insurance and healthcare access for as many people as possible.
Excuse me, your three minutes are up. Please summarize.
Thank you. Um, but in the end, what we need is to think about how to rebuild the ship, how to build it in a way that actually includes all members of our community and that can allow us to steer our healthcare system in the right direction toward care that's compassionate and humane and lower cost and sensible. Um, and that's what I believe this bill uh will allow us to do.
Uh, thank you for your testimony. Can I just, just, just uh, because you've testified on on a number of bills and and you've been studying these issues. Obviously, I hear you articulating a need for universal health coverage. At least that's what I understand you.
Sorry, yeah, I should have specified SB ten ninety is the bill that I'm testifying in support of today.
I'm really interested in where you feel the medical community has moved in terms of um plugging, you know, from desperately plugging holes, especially in the wake of this pandemic, to uh quickly constructing another ship. Um, do you, have you, in your ten years, uh, since you've been, you know, in this sort of um setting, ha- have you seen the the public will change from the medical community?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I think that our generation of healthcare providers is, has a very different attitude toward um the purpose of our healthcare system and the right approaches to our healthcare system than than previous generations did. Before the A C A, we didn't think, we thought that it was okay for health insurance companies to exclude people based on pre-existing conditions. No one thinks that's okay anymore. The A C A changed what we expect from our healthcare system to be that everyone would be covered. And the deficiencies in the A C A are its inability to do that because it works through a private health insurance system. Um, and so it is flawed, for sure. Um, but I think that that even the flaws that we're discussing are evidence of of the fact that our expectations of our healthcare system have changed. Um, and, you know, I have been involved in mobilizing medical students and young trainees across the country in support of um universal access, you know, through the A C A and through additional means. Um, and I've seen how much momentum there is behind behind that movement. I think that that is an emerging consensus among the medical community.
Thank you for that. And to you, Mr. Chair, I think um what I'm really hoping is, like, I'm hearing from a number of younger, you know, generation people that say they they would never eat, nobody that they know goes to preventative dental care twice, twice a year. You know, and that is the opposite of my experience at your age, the opposite in terms of uh maintaining. But then again, there were a lot of my counterparts that went, their entire twenties and and the entire thirties having no coverage and just hoping that they had no catastrophic. But now, since we've pushed everything into the catastrophic and unavoidable and and the the concept of medical debt, which didn't even really exist, you know, a generation of ago, and now is the norm. I I I find it really interesting what you're talking about in terms of changing expectations, both of the healthcare system, of the medical system, and of uh patients in terms of, you know, regular preventive care and and expecting uh, you know, healthy outcomes.
And of course, prevented, that kind of preventative care um reduces costs in the long run, right? I mean, most of the things that we see in the hospital are complications of underlying health conditions that have simmered for a long time, whether it's diabetes or hypertension, cardiovascular disease. Um, so the 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 real way to reduce cost is to expand access and restructure the way that we deliver healthcare such that we can prevent those kinds of complications.
Yeah, you're talking about health costs, and we're also in this study hoping to look at the economic costs and savings of both, you know, that intersectionality of health costs of delayed care. And like you say, simmering chronic um exacerbated conditions, underlying conditions, untreated conditions, yeah.
Absolutely. And and it's worth pointing out from the cost perspective as well that that, you know, uh Medicare and Medicaid tend to care for people with um high levels of medical need. Um, insurance works best when you have people in the pool who uh who are not high utilizers of healthcare. And those are the additional people who would be incorporated in a single payer system. So, you know, to one of Representative Aurora's earlier questions about, does expanding the system cripple it? Does it lead to failures in the system? I would argue that it leads to improvements in the system because it increases the pool of people who are insured to include young and healthy people that that allow for us to pay for the medical costs of our society as a whole.
Great, thank you. And to you, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to say, what what do you think about the sweet spot population of our three point five million people in terms of this being an experiment in sustainability?
Oh, I mean, I I think that experimenting on the state level is is critical. And uh, you know, this may be a policy that is best enacted on 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 the national level in the end, but um, it's very difficult to uh to make those kinds of national changes without um state-level experimentation. And and I think that this is the kind of experimentation that can attract people and that can that can make a state a really attractive place to move to, especially for young people.
Wow. Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you, Representative Hughes.
Next up, we have uh Daniel Bryant, followed by Karen Siegel.
Thank you so much, Senator Lesser. Uh, my name is Daniel Bryant. Um, I appreciate you taking the time to listen to me today. Uh, I come to you today as both a patient and a healthcare provider. Uh, I'm a licensed professional counselor. I've been practicing here in the state of Connecticut for uh ten years this year. Um, and I work at one of our largest community health centers delivering care to mostly Husky insured patients. Um, on the provider side, it is important to understand the gaps in the system that we currently have and the ways in which this will help to seal some of those gaps up. Uh, I have countless patients who are working poor, trying desperately to get their lives on track, and they get a slight pay bump and find themselves thrown off of Husky through no fault of their own. And then are either outside of the realm of enrollment for the A C A or just quite frankly can't afford it because the plan is not nearly as comprehensive as Husky is. Husky is a system that is really quite comprehensive and excellent, and patients are grateful for, and I am proud to provide care under. And with few exceptions around specialists, it meets almost all of the needs of patients fairly universally. Uh, as a patient, I'm a type one diabetic. Uh, and when I first finished grad school, I moved to the state of Massachusetts, and I was able to get state insurance that I paid for and contributed to in a way that made my life affordable and survivable. So a brief period where I was uninsured in the state's program, which had not just one, but two different choices to choose from that were state-funded uh that I could buy into, provided excellent insurance at a fair and reasonable price uh without all of the challenges that were presented to me uh in the A C A uh or in other places at the time. Um, this program will do an awful lot for the citizens of this state. Um, I am proud to work so closely with the Husky Health Insurance Program, and I am hopeful that something that resembles that will be what is is generated from this bill uh as it is a system that we should all be proud of and seeking to expand access to even at a cost.
Thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you.
And next up, we have Karen Siegel, followed by James Bendary Alexander.
Good afternoon, Senator Lesser, Representative Abercrombie, S D members of the Human Services Committee. My name's Karen Siegel, and I'm testifying today on behalf of Health Equity Solutions, where I service the Director of Policy. Health Equity Solutions is a nonprofit organization with a statewide focus on promoting policies, programs, and practices that result in equitable healthcare access, delivery, and outcomes for all people in Connecticut. I appreciate this opportunity to testify today in support of SB ten ninety. Um, as many of you have heard me say in recent weeks, health insurance is a necessary part of health equity. And this study could develop a plan for ensuring that all Connecticut residents have access to health insurance that they are able to utilize. Um, in order to ensure that our priorities are community-informed, Health Equity Solutions conducts annual listening sessions. And um this year, despite conducting them in the midst of a pandemic, one of those top two concerns was healthcare affordability. Um, we believe that Husky programs are a good basis for the study um of universal healthcare program because they offer a comprehensive health insurance, so they cover dental and mental health care and and access to a comprehensive set of services. Um, because they cover the uh, they cover care across the lifespan, um and they are quite fiscally efficient. Um, we respectfully recommend that the study include analysis of the program's potential impact on disparities in insurance coverage by race and ethnicity, which are currently quite large in Connecticut, and barriers to enrollment and utilization of health insurance that disproportionately impact people of color, including um not only premiums but other out-of-pocket costs and the processes involved in enrolling and in renewing coverage. Given the work that's been done in other states in recent years to address affordability, um we believe that there's ample opportunity for this study to draw on lessons learned in other states, particularly around whether or not those programs have reduced disparities um and to provide real insight on both the costs and ability of the program to mitigate um an insurance disparities in Connecticut. Um, I also noted recently that even with the new increased premium subsidies through the um, the American Rescue Program uh plan, um a household of four covering just the two adults would still face five thousand dollars in out-of-pocket costs if they needed to actually use their health insurance. So a host of research demonstrates that out-of-pocket costs cause people to forego or delay the healthcare that they need, and this is particularly worrisome um in a pandemic when we know people are already delaying care for fear of contracting um COVID. So thank you all for the opportunity to speak with you today. Happy to take any questions.
Uh, thank you, Karen, and I think there may be some who's testifying as well.
Rafi was trying to break in.
Oh, absolutely. I I've certainly never been there. Uh, uh, well, thank you. Uh, next up, James Bendary Alexander, followed by Carlos, Carlos Moreno.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for hearing me. Uh, my name is James Bendary Alexander. I'm the Legal Director of the Medical Legal Partnership at the Solomon Center for uh Health Law and Policy at Law School. Having said that, I am not a health insurance expert. I'm a legal aid lawyer. Um, we provide civil legal services to low-income patients in medical sites of care. So um, under, in our program, um, I'm supervising law students and working with patients in, from a variety of different patient communities, including veterans, uh people in palliative care, cancer patients, geriatric patients, um uninsured immigrants, and people coming out of incarceration. And each patient community has uh different needs in terms of health insurance. What I want to do is just describe a little bit of what I'm seeing um and in support of of this uh proposal for a a study. What I see uh similar to the 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 um medical care provider from the Community Health Center is that there are a lot more gaps in coverage than people realize, even for low-income people. And I think one of the most dramatic examples is for people leaving incarceration. They often have a lot of trouble getting on to Husky even when they, by all appearances, qualify. In fact, it has to do with federal Medicaid, and it has, it, there's a, there's a fix at the federal level um to try to allow people leaving incarceration to actually apply and be granted health insurance at the end of sentence. This uh, the fact that this is required for these people to get health insurance, I think, gives you a little glimpse into how fragmented and nonsensical this complicated health insurance system of ours can be for our most vulnerable people. Of course, for uninsured immigrants who have no access currently to public health insurance, the problem is very straightforward. At no point, until they're able to succeed in their immigration uh applications, at no point will they be receiving any public health insurance. So the health effects are very bad, and I can contrast it with the veterans that we serve. The veterans are in a, not just a single payer system, they're in a national health system um that they're very satisfied with in general. Are there horror stories? You, yes. We saw them a few years ago in Washington, D.C. Um, there was an entire investigation, um, an important investigation that uncovered all kinds of problems. There are problems, but the average person at the V A is in a lot better position than people from my other client communities. Having said all that, and and with the caveat that I'm a strong supporter of of a federal Medicare for All bill, I come into this conversation grateful that you're looking at a study because um I don't know a lot about what it would look like to have a single payer health insurance at the state level. And I think some of the questions that have been raised are really valid. Um, questions about how it would work. Um, and I would, I would suggest that you add into your list of things the commission could look at um the effect on me by municipalities that are uh facing extreme problems right now. Help that would it could be providing more services if as an employer they weren't they weren't uh paying such high prices for health insurance. I would also ask for you uh to include more consumers in who's included on the commission.
Excuse me, um, excuse me, sir, your three minutes are up. Please summarize.
Yes, so in summary, I I support this study. I genuinely support this study as of somebody who does believe in single payer on the national level as a way to answer the questions that people are putting forward about how it would affect us at the state level.
Uh, thank you, James, for your testimony and for those suggestions. I I agree with you. If this proposal were to move forward, it should it uh address a lot of those questions. And uh, uh, thank you for your testimony. Uh, it's good to see you.
Hi, thanks. Thank you all very much for your time.
Next up, Carlos Moreno. Carlos, you're up.
Great. Thank you, Senator Lesser, Representative Abercrombie, and members of the Human Services Committee. My name is Carlos Moreno. I'm the State Director, Connecticut Working Families Organization. We stand in support of SB ten ninety as a pathway to a statewide, universal healthcare system. Uh, rising healthcare costs are a major economic threat to Connecticut residents. Over the past fifteen years, families saw the cost of healthcare in Connecticut rise by seventy-seven percent. It's much faster than the median wages at twenty-one percent and greatly reducing disposable income. As of two thousand eighteen, family coverage averaged twenty thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars a year in Connecticut. And that's consuming twenty-eight percent of median household income, with projections for healthcare costs to continue to rise significantly faster than inflation. So if you consider that forty percent of Americans wouldn't be able to afford an emergency expense of just four hundred dollars, it's no wonder that unpaid medical bills are the single greatest cause of bankruptcies for Americans. In the U.S., about two-thirds of personal bankruptcies have been medical costs related and um, and when you factor in that cities like Bridgeport and Hartford were seventy-three percent and sixty-six percent respectively of the population live just one paycheck away from poverty, it's clear that the crisis required bold action way before COVID even hit. But the pandemic has exacerbated existing economic and healthcare inequalities, and the loss of jobs among people of color has led to a health insurance loss that's approximately double across the U.S., with immigrant and Latinx populations experiencing the most disproportionate impacts. So we're at a moment that seriously merits the study of a single, of a statewide, single payer system. Our healthcare system, as everybody knows, is extremely fragmented, requiring that patients navigate through a patchware, patchwork of care systems, coverage plans, and varying costs. And it's clear why administrative costs are so excessive in the U.S., and that's at about twenty-four percent of healthcare expenditures overall. A single payer system would ensure that most healthcare dollars go to patient care, not the cost of doing business or profits for executives. Several states have been pushing forward with studies to assess the benefits and impact of single payer state-level systems. And study after study has has shown a common thread and determined that net cost savings and or increases in household uh income overall um are really what stands out. A few examples, I'll just pull out a few examples. Those are three. One in California, a study estimated that overall costs of providing healthcare coverage to all under a proposed program would fall by about by about eighteen percent relative to spending levels under the existing system. Those savings would be achieved but mainly through streamlining administrative functions, restructuring pharmaceutical pricing, and fee structures for service providers. In Maine, another study showed that a proposed single payer system there would um would affect most families uh positively. Those in the bottom eighty percent of households, based on income, would experience a boost in household income as a result of the proposed single payer plan. For middle-income families, the average income gain would have been thirty-five hundred dollars per year at eight, and that's eight percent of the annual income. In Georgia, another study, research found that uh the proposed single payer program there, Secure Care, would achieve universal coverage while actually reducing healthcare spending for Georgia by about seven hundred and sixteen million dollars. The primary source of those savings would be reductions in the cost of administering various health insurance programs and savings through bulk purchasing. So my testimony includes a link to a site that includes studies uh from fourteen different states that have examined this issue. I encourage everybody to check it out. Um, and lastly, uh, we'd like to make the following recommendations respectfully to the parameters of this study. One, uh, we asked that a health equity impact analysis examining coverage by race and ethnicity, as well as barriers through enrollment and usage, take place. Two, ensure that undocumented immigrants are included in the analysis of uninsured persons. And three, a feasibility study with recommendations for training and transitioning the private insurance workforce to a single payer system workforce. We're clear-eyed that there are no shortcuts.
Excuse me, excuse me, your three minutes are up. Please um conclude your.
Excuse me, your three minutes are up. Please conclude your testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. And the biggest barrier to state level in universal healthcare are insurance companies themselves. So I ensure that this, I urge this committee to take this important step and support SB 1090. Doing so will acknowledge that universal healthcare is a fundamental value for Connecticut. Thank you.
Hi, thank you, Carlos, for your testimony.
I'll go to Rona Stoller. Rona, how are you?
Thank you, Senator Moore, and thank you to members of the Human Services Committee. My name is Rona Stoller. I live in New London, and I support Senate Bill 1090. A little over a year ago, in February of 2020, the New London City Council unanimously approved a resolution in support of single payer healthcare legislation. I was one of the citizen presenters of that resolution, which had broad support among the city's residents as well as elected officials. Even before the COVID pandemic exposed and widened the gaps and cracks in our current fragmented for-profit healthcare system, our city was impacted daily by its failings. For all of the 26 years I've lived in New London, our city has struggled to maintain services while trying not to overtax our residents. The burden of providing healthcare insurance to municipal employees and retirees makes this a nearly impossible task in cities like New London where a large amount of our land is non-taxable and limits our opportunities for revenue. In fiscal year 2020, health insurance premiums cost New London over $13 million, about 15% of the budget, and a line item second only to wages. That year, our Board of Education had to adjust for a surprise 29% increase in the cost of premiums, resulting in reduced programs while adding no value to employees or to families in our community. According to estimates made at the time the resolution was being considered, about nine mils of our high 39.9 mil tax rate went to health insurance costs. Husky for All offers the potential for significant savings, and Connecticut municipalities need the study authorized by Senate Bill 1090 in order to determine, much more accurately than our estimates can, how a state's single payer healthcare program could benefit our cities. Additionally, the current system's effect on the overall well-being of our community goes far beyond its obvious budgetary impact. As our region's urban hub, New London provides much of its safety services. People forced to choose between buying food or medicine come to our meal center and food pantries. Those whose spousal insurance benefits keep them in abusive relationships may utilize our domestic violence support centers. Those who lose their home or savings due to medical debt may find themselves in our shelters. And those who delay routine medical care are likely to end up in our hospitals' emergency rooms. For these reasons, I urge the Human Services Committee to approve SB 1090 and also ask that the study include data on the trickle-down impacts of our current system on municipalities, employers, and individuals.
Excuse me, your three minutes are up. Can you please summarize? Thank you.
Yeah. One last statement. As a senior citizen, I have to disagree with the statement that we love Medicare as it's currently administered. There are many things it doesn't cover, like dental and vision care. I'm lucky that I'm also covered by Connecticut retiree insurance. And between my two public insurances, I have good coverage. Husky for All would allow that kind of good coverage to everyone in our state. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rona. Appreciate your comments. Are there any questions? Representative Hughes.
Thank you so much, Rona. You said something about the New London $13 million cost in the line item to insurance. And you said something also about, without adding any value, and I thought that's an incredible point that we hope that this study will look at. What is the value of not having to review every year and compare plans and just know that this is a service that's going to be covered and paid not by you getting denials, but by, you know, by it being submitted to someone else that is just gonna pay it?
And it is huge. One, I mean, when I wrote that sentence, really partly what I intended was that with the 29% increase in insurance premiums, no one thinks we got a better policy out of it. Our insurance, our employees did not get better insurance policies. They did not get lower deductibles. They did not get better, you know, more comprehensive coverage. It just cost more. And to think that school programs had to be cut because, you know, our mil rate was already nearly 40, one of the highest in the state probably, that it was really an unconscionable decision, but they had to make it. And I hoped that our Board of Ed finance rep could come today, but he has a day job, so I came instead. But he and one of our city councilors had written an op-ed back over a year ago about the impact particularly on the Board of Ed budget, which I think was about $8 million of that $13 million that the city spends on insurance.
Through you, Madam Chair. Thank you so much, Rona. And I believe in the language in the commission study, we do ask for an analysis of impact and savings on municipalities specifically, which would be a tremendous, you know, a tremendous value to the taxpayers of all municipalities if they, if we could shift some of the savings into direct services and amenities of those towns.
Thank you for including that.
I'll double-check. I think so. But I believe that we added municipalities to the language. Thank you. I don't have any further questions.
Thank you. I don't see any other questions for you, Rona, but thank you for coming today and thank you for taking the time to give us your testimony. I appreciate it. Next is Jamie Myers-McPhail.
Hi, good afternoon, Senator Moore and members of the Health and Human Services Committee. My name is Jamie Myers-McPhail. I'm a resident of New Haven, and I organize with New Haven Rising here in support of SB 1090 and act establishing a commission to study a Husky for All single payer universal healthcare program. For most of my life, I did not have health insurance. Thankfully, I was healthy, but I did live with constant fear and stress. What if I had an accident? In fact, that happened to be my first semester of college. While walking, I was hit by a fast-moving car, and I didn't seek proper treatment because I couldn't afford a hospital bill. Years later, when I was finally able to get healthcare through my union and get checked out, but because I didn't treat my injuries when they happened, I now have chronic pain and mobility issues. And yet, my experience is nothing compared to the thousands of lives that we lose every year due to lack of care. Our so-called healthcare system is not about health. It isn't caring, and it can't properly be called a system. It is a complete failure for all but the insurance and pharmaceutical industries. This pandemic, which we refer to as the Great Reveal, has shown us that it's not just an individual problem when someone can't go to the doctor, can't get checked up, or can't access proper healthcare. It becomes a problem for the entire community. It also costs more when people have to put off preventive care and then wind up in the emergency room for treatment when an issue has become life-threatening. It costs more not only for the individual and the family, but for the whole system. We are past the point where we can financially, morally, or from a public health standpoint justify excluding anyone from access to the care they need. Rising healthcare costs are a major economic threat to Connecticut. Over the past 15 years, families saw the cost of healthcare rise by 77%, much, much faster than median wages, which rose only 21%, and greatly reduced disposable income. One of my members, a teacher at a charter school, recently revealed to me that his deductible is $14,000. So all he can do is pray that nothing happens, and he can't rightly start a family that he wants to start. Healthcare attached to specific employment also stifles entrepreneurship and ingenuity and strangles small businesses. This harms our communities and economy overall. We can no longer tolerate inaction or playing politics with people's lives. If we didn't see the crisis prior, then the COVID-19 pandemic and Trump presidency should have ripped the curtain off to reveal deep systemic racism. In the wealthiest state in the wealthiest country on earth, the injustices in our healthcare system are glaring. Our inequality was already the fastest-growing, and now the pandemic has deepened the wide gap between rich and poor. It is time for courage. It is time for bold action. We must tax the rich and foster real equity with every single bill passed this session, starting with this one. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Jamie. Next is David Jacarino Jr.
Hi. So first of all, thanks so much, Senator Moore, and, you know, the rest of the committee for giving me time to speak. My name is David Jacarino. I'm a lifelong Connecticut resident, and I'm here to testify in favor of SB 1090. I wanted to start with a quick story about the first time in my life I thought there was something wrong with our healthcare system. When I was in elementary school, I had a classmate who was diagnosed, unfortunately, with leukemia. We had some sort of fundraiser for her. I think it was probably a bake sale or something like that. And I just remember asking, why? Why are we having a fundraiser? You know, this horrible thing happened. Why are we raising money? And I probably got a pretty simple answer. That cancer treatment is expensive. That didn't sit right with me, and it really hasn't since. So I felt it was important for me to testify today, not just because of my personal feelings about our broken healthcare system, or I should say, health insurance system, but because in this broken system, I'm actually one of the lucky ones. I work in biotech. I develop genetic tests in an R&amp;D lab, and I've had steady employment and what we call good insurance for about 13 years now. Even when I was laid off for three months, I was lucky enough to not lose coverage, although I did get to see the eye-popping costs associated with COBRA. And I've been relatively healthy, so you probably asked, why would I want to see an overhaul? Well, going back to my work, you know, we do a lot of genetic testing related to cancer, and I've seen how much our personal health can rely basically on luck. A single molecular mutation can upend your life. And when that happens, the last thing you should have to worry about is whether a private company will decide you're worth the cost of the best treatment available. And even if you're healthy, the bar for what we call good insurance seems to get lower every year. Every year in open enrollment, I have to make that decision. Do I stick with a higher deductible plan? Do I pay more in premiums upfront? What's gonna happen? So to go to this good insurance and friends and coworkers, I've seen, you know, over the years, $10 copays turn into $50 copays. I've seen a plan with no deductible turn into a plan with a $1,500 deductible. I've seen family members leave accidents with $5,000 bills, $10,000 bills. And I even have a coworker who was joking for a while that she still owed money for her baby because she left the hospital with a payment plan for her firstborn child. But still, I am one of the lucky ones. I ran for state representative last year in my district here in East Haven, and I met a family that reminded me of that. Their insurance plan had a $16,000 out-of-pocket maximum. Through a health scare and a badly timed accident the year before, they actually had to pay that on top of their premiums. I can't really comprehend how that is a reasonable amount of money for a working-class family to have to hand over on top of the premiums that they're paying to this private insurance company. So I support this bill because single payer health insurance, I think, is the only honest way we're gonna get out of this mess. And people like me who support this on a broad level, I do support a federal single payer change. We're realistic about our chances in Washington.
Excuse me, your three minutes are up. Please summarize. Thank you.
There's so much money lined up against it. But unlike in Washington, our legislative campaigns here in Connecticut are publicly financed. So my feeling is if we can't get substantial reform done here, I'm not sure how we'll get it done anywhere. With that in mind, I sincerely hope this committee will support SB 1090. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jacarino. Number 22 is Rebecca Bergara Reno.
Yes.
Hi, Rebecca.
Thank you for having me here. So hello, Senator Moore, Representative Abercrombie, and members of the Human Services Committee. My name is Rebecca Bergara. I'm a student at the Yale School of Medicine, and I also co-direct the student-run free clinic out of Yale University called Haven. And I'm here to stand in support of SB 1090. And so I'll be speaking mainly from the perspective of someone who's serving uninsured populations in New Haven. And for a variety of reasons, we see major gaps in our current system that I think this bill is important to explore. And so in our clinic, the largest barrier for coverage is legal status. Many immigrants are barred from signing up for Medicaid, receiving subsidies on the marketplace. And otherwise, the plans, the health insurance plans there are cost-prohibitive. And we also have patients who make a little bit too much money for the income limits at FQHCs. So a personal narrative of mine is a patient that we saw a couple of weeks ago. She had concern of post-menopausal bleeding. We did a study that was concerning for endometrial cancer. And so the, because our clinic was not equipped to handle that sort of care, we referred to her to a local FQHC, and she didn't qualify for a sliding scale. They told her that she would have to pay $350 for the visit, and she just didn't go. And so that is the kind of story that we see quite often, especially for those who are just barely over those income limits. Other patients of ours we see that are self-employed, or they work multiple jobs part-time and don't qualify for their company's health insurance. Or simply, there's citizens who just don't qualify for Medicaid because, and they don't, aren't able to afford the plans on the marketplace because they have too many expenses for them to pay for health insurance. And then lastly, we've just seen the incredible impact that a pandemic can have on health insurance. And many of our patients, we've seen, lose their jobs and thus their coverage and leaving them without any ability to pay for their care. So what we see is just, as many people here today have said, a patchwork of solutions at every step of the way for every service an uninsured or underinsured patient needs. They have to go through another bureaucratic process or are barred completely. And so the consequences of this system is that people just delay their care until the point where it's an emergent situation. And that often ends in a large hospital bill, which many people cannot afford, and that cost is taken up by the hospital systems and the state government. So I stand in support of this bill to explore the extent of this broken system and helping bring us, you know, one step closer to a more equitable system. And I'm also here to advocate for very clear language in the bill to study the impact of single payer plan on all residents of Connecticut, regardless of immigration status. Immigrant communities have been systematically excluded from most state programs, and this bill, if this bill is striving to assess how we can get to universal coverage, no person in the state of Connecticut should be excluded.
Excuse me, your three minutes are up. Please summarize. Thank you.
Yep, so that was pretty much it. Thank you all for the opportunity to speak today, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Yes. Thank you, Rebecca, for your testimony. And I do see someone, Representative Dathan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Welcome back. Rebecca, thank you so much for your testimony today. It's really insightful. I have, was curious to see how many physicians and people in the medical profession coming out today in support of this. And I think you raised a lot of good points. We've seen it in front of this committee in previous years, how people with relatively simple, what could have been a simple office visit, because wasn't diagnosed and the person didn't go to see a doctor or even go to the emergency room, delayed the treatment only to cost, you know, several hundred thousand dollars down the road. And it's really curious how much of that, and I think a lot of people don't quite understand that we taxpayers, you know, do pay for people who are uninsured. And the hospitals do have to cover the cost because of the Hippocratic Oath to cover and to work with people. And I think, you know, that is, it seems like it's forgotten. In terms of studies that you might be familiar with, is there anything that you could, any data? I'm a data person, so I'd like to know if you are familiar with any studies that really investigate the delaying cost of healthcare?
That's a great question. That's a great question. I can only speak from my personal experiences. I think there's a couple of studies that came out from Yale a year or so ago about assessing single payer. But I think that was more at the national level, but it was from two researchers out of Yale University. So I guess I would suggest that study, but aside from that, I apologize. I don't really have that experience in the data aspect.
It's more anecdotal. Yeah, and that's a lot of the stories I've heard, you know, in front of this committee and in front of other committees, that it is all the- But I just do find it curious that, you know, so many medical professionals are supporting this, which makes me wonder, you know, you know, why more states aren't doing this? What is the true cause? In terms of medication for people, do you also find in your practice that people avoid taking medication or titrating down medication or kind of reserving medication for other instances because they can't afford the cost of prescription drugs?
So yes, that would definitely be one of the top reasons why we send someone to the emergency department is because they were either hypertensive or diabetic patient, and they just didn't have continuous supply to that medication that they needed. And so they come to us with, you know, blood sugars up the roof, and so we have to send them to the emergency. That's the only option. We can't just take care of them in the clinical setting. So yeah, that's definitely an experience. Even despite, you know, 340B pricing in FQHCs and other community clinics, a lot of drugs are still cost prohibitive, and especially now during the pandemic when people can barely scrape together enough money for rent. We've seen the impact. We've actually had to take on paying for our patients' medications. So that's a significant portion of our clinic's budget now because of the pandemic.
My dogs decided to have their say. They are very upset about the cost of prescription drugs as well.
The lack of data, I think that's the reason for this important bill to be, to move forward, so that way we can get more state-specific data, regardless of what the outcome of that data says. There's a severe lack of data, I think, overall.
I am hoping that your situation does improve with the insulin bill that we did last year. And I will hope that, you know, that will help improve some of the outcomes that you have for your patients in your office. And I do hope that we can find some solutions to help with, you know, these other medication costs, because it is cost prohibitive, and it's the one thing I worry, well, one of the things I worry about a lot when it comes to healthcare. Thank you so much for your testimony today, Rebecca, and thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. There is a hand up. Representative Aurora.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So good to see you. Thank you, Rebecca, for your testimony. I just wanted a couple of questions. Number one, what did you think about? First of all, did you support ACA, also known as Obamacare? And did you think that it did anything, if at all, to help the situation with access or the challenges which we all face and which you see so often?
Yeah, my answers will likely not differ too much from Matt Mysliss's answers. And I do think there is an incredible change in the healthcare system due to the ACA and the improvement of what we expect from our health insurance. It's no doubt that, you know, including people who have prior health conditions in the insurance pool, that's just the morally correct thing to do. And I used to work actually as a healthcare navigator for the ACA. So I saw a lot of people who had health conditions, who desperately needed health insurance, and they were finally able to access care through that way. And prior to the ACA, mental health care was, you know, almost non-existent in healthcare plans. So there's definitely, you know, a slew of services that the ACA required that health insurance provide, and that has been an overall benefit. There's just still continuing to, these gaps are still continuing to exist. And so we just need to progress forward and find new solutions. Not that we should necessarily throw out what we currently have, but continue to progress forward.
Thanks, Rebecca. You know, the centerpiece of the ACA, which costs really money. The other things were regulations, you know, kind of streamlining, kind of what could be covered or not, was the creation of coverage or of making sure that nobody was left behind through either the exchanges or the expansions, right? So the exchanges, which is what we really are, you know, consider as one of the things which was done to cover everyone, have had a problem of costs and have a problem that we heard that, you know, somebody who's on Husky would basically, as soon as they make enough money above a limit, they have to buy insurance on ACA, and the ACA plans are just terrible. They're just terrible. And most people don't like them. And if you know that currently, pretty much everybody, and for a moment, let's just keep the undocumented citizens aside, or undocumented, sorry, undocumented, what word, undocumented, folks who are undocumented aside, everybody has coverage. Either you're covered through Husky, and if you have over a certain limit, you're covered through ACA, but you have to pay something. And most folks do not want to pay something, then they wouldn't be covered. So the question which I really have for you is that with the ACA, which was supposed to cover holes, really did not, it cost $500 billion. And you're saying, well, really, the private market coverage helped because we had to take pre-existing out, which is a really good thing. And what we're saying is the $500 billion which we spend on, as a country, on covering those holes did help. And so what makes us feel that, you know, taking it in more government control? And I really appreciate, you know, you coming on, because, you know, I'm wondering why you don't, you know, economists from your side do not come on from Yale. It's only the healthcare people who come on. So I really wonder that. But, you know, again, to the question that, why is it that despite that fact that, you know, the ACA has been created, that we still do not have that coverage or acceptance?
Representative Aurora, this is Senator Moore. I don't know what that question has to do with setting up a commission to look at single payer.
Because the single payer is going to kill Obamacare or ACA. It is basically replacing ACA. I do not want something which creates, which killed something, which was supposed to solve the problem. It is, what you're trying to do is set up a commission to kill the single most important, actually, your side agenda in the last two decades. And I do not-
So what do you refer to as my side agenda? What does that mean? Representative Aurora, what does my side agenda mean?
Meaning the party, your party side, in some side. You know, I'm just referring to the fact that as conservatives, we have really wanted to change the competitive market system. Whereas, you know, as you say, as the history tells us, there was a lot of opposition on the federal level, not on the state. Obviously, there was a state program. So what we're saying is, why do we not want to kill that with a statewide mandate?
I don't think that's, there's a question there. And I don't think you should generalize as to my side, because you don't know where I've been for the last 20 years or any of these other people. So I would speak directly to the question, but also be very specific in your question. And I don't think Rebecca should be held accountable for where the economists versus the people who see the patients. I mean, everybody has an opportunity to come on here. You could have asked economists to come on and give that piece also, so. I don't think it's for Rebecca to explain about the Economists or the Affordable Care Act. She gave her point of view and her testimony as to why she believes this should be done. And I think that, in all fairness, should be the question that you ask or related to this bill.
Madam Chair, but there's a lot of questions earlier on that were going against the federal level that were brought up by people who were testifying. So I'm just saying it's a proper question that he had, but if you were the chair, you can rule it.
I don't want the person giving the testimony to be on the spot for that. That's what I don't want. That was not her expertise. She came in and spoke as a community person working in a community setting, right? That was her expertise, not the other. I couldn't even tell you, I couldn't even respond to the question that you've asked. So Rebecca just said, we say, I don't know.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'm not asking, putting her in a spot in that sense, because you have to realize that for most of us, we are thinking on our feet as well. We haven't had time. So some of the comments and the questions are interlaced, and that's for every single, you know, for many of us. And again, you don't want me to use from both sides, for many of the members of this committee, is, you know, these comments and questions are interlaced because we're thinking on our feet as well. And it's not that easy either, because we have extremely intelligent people testifying and giving us ideas and challenging some of the assumptions we may have, which is the beauty of this process, and that's why it works very well.
Well, do you have anything else you'd like to ask of Representative Aurora?
Yes, I was about to conclude when you suggested that, you know, that-
Well, you can ask her the question, sir.
Pardon me?
You can ask her the question.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I really appreciate the opportunity. If you get off to conclude and to gather my train of thoughts here, you do believe that, would you think that reforming the system as it exists is not a good alternative to a single payer?
I think that the purpose of this bill is to find more information and to do studies onto what is the best model that should, and that the state should go for. And I don't think having more information is detrimental to that cause. So that is why I'm in support of this bill. It's not necessarily, and we're seeing a coverage that would be more expansive than the ACA. I don't think this is a bill that would necessarily destroy the ACA. It would just expand on the coverage that already exists in a different form. And you can certainly, you know, the arguments that you come up with, you know, throughout this entire public testimony, I think those are really important points. But I think, you know, the purpose of this commission would be to explore those points more and to ensure that we're not just using, we're using our personal experiences, of course, but also seeing how the data reflects those personal experiences as well. So that's how I see the purpose of this bill and the purpose of this commission, and that's why I'm in support.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Appreciate that, Rebecca. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none. Thank you, Rebecca. That was the last person that we had on the list. I'm going to end the meeting. I just want to mention that 9 o'clock tomorrow morning, we have a committee meeting. And you all have a great day. Thank you. And I want to thank Matt Lesser for stepping in for me. Appreciate it, and my co-chair.
Senator Moore, we will be doing a caucus for the Democrats at 8:00 AM tomorrow, and the same thing for Thursday before the committee meeting at 9:00.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Representative Case, do you want to say anything?
No, I'm all set. We caucus yesterday, so we're all good. We're ready to vote.
All right. Representative Wood, did you have something you wanted to say?
No, just thank you. I mean, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Take care, everybody.
Thank you. See you tomorrow.
Bye-bye.
Bye.